It's preparing the live stream, so give me a second. Okay.
Good.
I think we're good. We are. So everybody at Senate attendance, this is a recorded meeting. So announcing that it is a recorded meeting published on the city website. If you want to go back and watch it and review it. And I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
Great. Thanks, Tim. I'd like to call to order the Board of Architectural Review Meeting for November 12th, 2025. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Frye.
Here.
Carolyn Huber.
Here.
Ken Merciniak. Kate Fisher.
Here.
And Jeff Schaaf.
Here.
I'm Tim Burns, the City's zoning administrator present as well. Before we start, I just got one question. Ken, can you hear the other people? Okay. I got you right by my computer, so, okay.
Okay. First item is approval of the minutes of the October 15th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 15th meeting.
Second.
Ken seconded that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is building review app number three zero dash two zero two five. Requested by Fred Suede for Daniel Suede, sixty-five, sixty-six Brent Road, building number two. And we'll team this with building review app number three one dash two zero two five. Requested also by Fred Suede for Daniel Suede, sixty-five, sixty-six Brent Road, building number three. Doesn't look like anybody's here for that.
Um, I do not see anybody present.
So these are new buildings that are going in apparent, I would guess, but next to building one and two or building number one?
Correct, and I can only speak on behalf of really what you have in front of you. He dropped off to my office, rough samples and siding samples, but I don't know which colors.
Are they mashing what the existing building looks like?
Sorry, what'd you say, Jeff?
Are they matching the existing building that's there?
I, I don't, I really can't speak on it. I don't know exactly their plan.
Okay.
Um, Ken, what did you say?
I, I asked, aren't we voting on the colors? That's what the.
Well, it's an architectural review, so yes, you are voting on the aesthetics of the exterior. That is correct. So I think.
Colors that he's proposing. I mean, what if he had some green and chartreuse orange or something?
Yeah. I mean, I know. I just can't speak on behalf because I don't know what colors are selected.
Okay.
He did not provide a color rendering. I did ask for that. What he brought in was color samples, so I brought those boards with me. I can show you. This is the siding sample board. And I can pull it up so you can see the different colors, but I do not know which color in particular he is selecting.
I think, I think we should pass on this until they get a complete file for us to vote on.
Do you want to make that motion? Or I don't know if it's at this point in time, if it's worth tabling it to see if he pops up in the meeting.
If he shows up with colors, then we'll talk about it.
Yeah, it sounds like he was planning to be at the meeting.
He was definitely aware of it.
Okay. All right, so we'll table this for now.
You need, you need.
Motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table. The, um, well, what is it? Application number thirty, uh, twenty twenty-five and application number thirty-one, twenty twenty-five until we have additional information on the colors selected.
To Kate first. And Ken second. Mark.
Actually, I was a motion.
Mark first.
Thank you.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Opposed? Okay, we'll see if either one of them show up. Okay, next item is regulated app. Or regulated sign app number three two dash two zero two five requested by Ryan Wishaw of Toledo Sign for Toledo Clinic at forty-nine hundred North McCord Road. And I don't see Ryan on here either. Is this a new sign, Tim? Or is it replacing an old sign from somebody else? I guess there's nothing existing.
There, there was a sign there, but it's not a replacement sign of something that was just there. It's been a blank space. The sign meets the sign code. There's no objections from the zoning department.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for approval on application thirty-two dash two zero two five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, next item is building review for a mural at number thirty-three dash two zero two five requested by Christopher Rosenthal for Black Rose Cigars. Hi, Chris.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good, sir. How are you?
Good. So we've got this in the packet. Is this up already?
It is.
Okay, that's what I thought. I noticed I drive home that way from work a lot and I was like, oh, what's that? That looks kind of cool. Um, but I didn't know that it would be on the agenda for this month. Do we have any? What, what do we need to discuss on this, Tim?
Um, it's, it's an aesthetics review.
Okay.
So murals require Board of Architecture Review and it's basically a little hiccup. Chris didn't understand and never really had conversation ahead of time of it. I went down and talked to the workers while they were doing it, but by the time I caught up with them, they were basically three quarters or maybe even a little bit further than that through the work. Because of where they were in the status, Chris and I talked. Um, he understood that he had to come through this process, but we agreed to let the artist proceed to completion.
Okay. Any comments?
What is it made out of? I mean, is it? Out, is it paint or is it specific outdoor?
Uh, I mean, it is, it is paint. It, it is, I don't know. I provided pictures and dimensions to Mr. Burns. I don't know if you have it there. It is paint. It's painted on, uh, special UV paint that won't fade. It'll continue to be nice. It has a clear coat over it. An anti-graffiti coat over it. I don't know if you can see in the picture. Uh, but if you look in each letter, each letter has something stereotypical of Slovenia and all our goal ever was to do was just do something nice for the city.
Yeah, I did. I did a drive by. It looked nice.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think it's beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's kind of in a interesting spot too, because that other building kind of blocks a portion of it.
It does. It does. I mean, if you, if you can talk Valvoline into selling us the corner, we'll prettier there too.
Right, right? I mean, do, do we normally with a mural, does that usually go through? Um, Redbird Arts? Is that the normal process or does Redbird not have anything to do with that?
This is outside their footprint.
Okay. Okay. It's just normally we'd have that permit beforehand and we'd discuss it so that everybody isn't just putting up murals all over. I think, I feel like someone's trying to put a mural up on the fence at Ravine and here on Haroon, I mean. So that, that might be interesting. That's a residential property. So we just need a motion to approve, right?
Right.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, numbers thirty-three dash twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thanks for coming in, Chris.
Thanks.
Appreciate. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate all the work.
Yeah.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Yep. Good evening.
Two.
Okay, next is regulated sign app number three four dash two zero two five requested by Robert Cummings for Flavor Flow at sixty-four eighty-one Monroe Street. Tim, is this one up too?
This one, uh, I believe, yes, this is up. He bought a temporary or a, uh, yeah, temporary sign permit for it.
Okay. And the.
Sign code, no objections from the zoning office.
Okay, and the lights in the front windows are or are not?
Those are not permitted. They have been visited on that.
Okay.
I believe they were removed, but I did not look at it this week.
Yeah, they were still on about an hour and a half ago.
Um, I would love it if the motion includes no lights in the windows and all advertising for products has to be interior to the building.
Okay.
Okay. Does someone want to make that motion?
Well, I've got a question, Tim. I, I know there's this sign shows kratom is a product. Is, and I know there's been an effort in Columbus to basically make the sale of kratom illegal in the state of Ohio. Do you know what the status of that is by chance? I do not.
I do not know where it is with the state. I know Toledo just voted it to ban sales of kratom.
Okay.
Um, I brought it to.
I believe.
I brought it to Joe's attention to bring to, I think it was your mayor's off, mayor's meetings.
He didn't mention anything about it. But maybe I got one tomorrow morning. Maybe he's going to mention it tomorrow morning.
Um, I just have been reading about it, following like different communities. Basically what the indication is, it's a, it's a pretty highly addictive product. Um, on top of its, um, let's see, the, the results of it, um, has some pretty negative effects from everything I understand. Above my pay grade as far as, you know, what to do with it, but.
Yeah, it looks like they're trying to, um, ban the synthetic derivative and regulate, heavily regulate the natural form at the state level.
Yeah, it is. It is every one of our smoke shops, for sure.
They all sell it?
Their number one product. They probably, they probably would not be in business, I think, all of them, if they didn't have it.
Would you, if they didn't have kratom?
I believe, I believe it's probably accurate.
So the risk is, is that this, this business is taking is if we as, as the city or the state of Ohio decides to ban the sale of kratom in our community or in the state of Ohio on a broad scale basis, the risk is this sign becomes basically obsolete and not a lot of users.
Yeah, potentially a vacant business if they moved out. Um, I mean, as a smoke shop, um, Black Rose Cigar is like a smoke shop, different type of product. Um, cigars, tobacco type products. I think they sell stuff for like pipes too.
Right.
Most of, at least prior to, to, I'll say the kind of the explosion of smoke shops. We've seen like three or four of them rapidly in Slovenia, but they're popping up everywhere, like every little like shopping center. And I think it's because of the, the ease of this product.
Well, and the fact that Toledo got decided to outlaw the sale of it basically pushes them out to Slovenia.
It certainly will do more of that, I think, because I think that, that vote was just like last week or the week before.
Yeah, I think that was just synthetic as well.
Was it just synthetic?
I believe so. I think they're probably leaning, waiting to see what the state does. Synthetic is banned, natural is, uh, legal still in the city of Slovenia, of Toledo. So I would guess that's going to change if the state passes something else.
Yep.
So it's a risk of them doing business, I suppose.
Yeah, I guess.
It's, it's one product that they sell. I just, I believe just from, I call it word on the street is it's their number one product. And I don't, I don't know specifically about this, this particular smoke shop, but I think in general, that's kind of the trend that has been pushing.
Right.
So do I have a motion to approve the sign as is?
Hold on one second. Ken started to say something. Go ahead, Ken.
So if the state rules this product illegal, they'll be gone anyways? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, not, it doesn't necessarily close the store. It closed, it would stop them from selling that particular product.
And that's the bulk of their product, their bulk of their sales is this product?
That's the way I understand a lot of these smoke shops. That's their number one product that they're selling. Um, if you walk into all of them and I've had to go in them because I'm going there to visit them for lights and all kinds of different things. And specifically this sign was proposed, um, and I advised him to, um, change his sign. He actually had, um, well, it, it shows, but the, the kratom verbiage has been removed from the sign.
Oh, it has?
Yes.
So kratom is no longer on the sign?
That is, that was his proposal to take the kratom off. That was my understanding.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, then, with that being said, I'll I'll make.
Yeah, I thought it said it on the app.
Oh, I missed, I missed it on the app.
Well, I'm looking for it because I thought, I know I had that conversation with him. It doesn't on the app, so I, I, I think I would maybe at least make the recommendation without that verbiage.
Yeah, so, so I'll, so I'll make a motion. This is going to be a little complicated, Tim, so I apologize for that. I'll make a motion to approve application number thirty-four dash twenty twenty-five with the following modifications. Uh, first that the, that the sign itself does not have the word kratom as part of the signage as, as verbally agreed to with the zoning administrator. Second, that the, um, open and the smoke shop signs in, in lit format be eliminated from the front of the shop.
So, um, I, if I can just chime in for one second, the open sign would be something that most businesses would be standardly allowed to have.
Run that past me again, Tim. I'm not sure I understood.
The open sign.
Oh, the open sign. Okay, so I'll modify the motion then I'll to allow the, allow the open sign, but to not allow the smoke shop sign.
Yep, and maybe include no products sold within. That, that's, that's the typical thing is they put stuff in their windows and, and our, our code prohibits marketing through the window, the product that you're selling inside.
Okay. So, so let me start with a completely, let me start from scratch then, Tim, because otherwise we're going to get lost in shuffle. So I'll make a motion to approve application number thirty-four, twenty twenty-five with the following provisions that the sign itself does not include the word kratom on it. That the, that the lit sign for smoke shop be removed. And that no product is put out in front, in front of the window, uh, per our zoning code.
Like that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. Thank you. Uh, the next item is a building review app number three five dash two zero two five requested by Gene Wong for DW twenty-eight Slovenia Square. LLC at fifty-eight oh one Monroe Street. This looks like it's a building facade that's going to be renovated and updated.
Yes, and I cannot speak on behalf of the proposal other than what's in front of you.
Okay.
I'm, I'm surprised he wasn't there because he's checked in with me a couple of times.
But this is where, um, My Way Bistro and UBS Store and all that, is that correct?
Correct, correct. Um, as far as what the appearance looks like, it's going to be a nicer upgrade than what's there. Um, but I don't have anything specific on product or colors.
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable approving something without colors. Since this is an architectural review application.
Yeah, it's hard to tell on printout. Is this peach? Is it yellow? Is it?
Yeah.
Pan?
Uh, I'm, I'm thrilled that they're doing the renovation, I, but we need a little more specificity, I would, I think on.
See what, what we're talking about.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, so we'll table this one.
I would suggest, yeah, voting to table it.
Okay.
The same with the other two. I think we table them also, so they.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table application number thirty-five dash twenty twenty-five until we get, um, some additional information on the color renderings that are, that are going to be put forward on, on the facility.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, the last item that I have is regulated sign app number three six dash two zero two five. Requested by Gary Harrell of Graphic Signs for DW twenty-eight properties at fifty-eight oh one. So this would be a new monument sign for this property.
Yeah, so this is a replacement of the existing pole sign on that property. The pole sign is becoming obsolete in the end of two thousand twenty-seven. And they, they want to continue their process with it. It meets the zoning code, um, meets the required setbacks. The zoning office has no objections.
And when they install this, they'll take down the other one, right?
It, it's going essentially in the same location, just slightly setback. So the, the current pole sign where the actual pole is is essentially, I think, the front of the right away. The sign kind of hangs out in um, sorry, the pole is at a ten foot setback. The sign hangs out into that ten foot, so the front lead of the sign will be approximately where the post is.
Okay. Just making sure that they're not going to put a new one up and leave the old one.
No, they do understand that.
Okay.
This is a result of our pole sign ordinance and them getting the letters that have been sent out from my office.
Okay. Any question, any other questions on that one? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval on application thirty-six dash two zero two five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Tim, any additions?
There are no additions.
Can I get a motion to adjourn the Board of Architectural Review?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the, um, architectural review.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. So, Tim, are we ready for planning?
Okay, you want, um, tenants?
Uh, I'll call to order the Slovenia Municipal Planning Commission for November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Frye?
Here.
Carolyn Huber?
Here.
Ken Merciniak? Kate Fisher?
Here.
Jeff Schaaf?
Here.
And I'm Tim Burns, the City's zoning administrator, here present as well.
Thanks, Tim. Uh, first item is approval of the minutes of the October fifteenth meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the October fifteenth meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next item is council referral for review and recommendation petition for zoning ordinance amendment number SUP four dash two zero two five. Submitted by William Gross for an open carport at fifty-nine ten Balfour Road. William, thank you for being patient and working with us through the first half of this meeting.
I, I have done, I've done many things similar to this. It's all right.
The zoning, the zoning folks always have to, or planning folks always have to sit through all the, the other stuff, so unfortunately, it took a little longer today, but we're here.
It's all good.
So it looks like you're, uh, wanting to put up a carport on an existing, uh, concrete drive?
That's correct.
Okay. And I guess I, I was reading through it, but I didn't understand. This is a metal structure or?
So let me give you, I'll give you a quick little history and I, and I won't get super in-depth, but uh, so anyways, I was looking at doing a carport, wanted to apply for the carport. Tim says no. First of all, there's an existing shed already on the property. So when the house was built a little over a year or so ago, the builder or whoever never actually acknowledged that this accessory building was there. Um, it was never caught by anyone, like nobody inspected the job site or anything like that, or else they would have seen a building. So when I go to apply for the carport, Tim lets me know that, hey, you're only allowed one building, right? And based on that, I'm going through the code. Me and Tim kind of go back and forth a little bit. Because again, I've just a little bit of history of me. I've worked, I've worked in construction since I was eight. I've run large companies like Erie Construction, which is now Erie Metal Roofing, Basement Experts. Um, arbitrated code down with Jay Murdock from Owens Goring at the state level. So as I'm looking at the, the code, I'm like, look, I said the code's actually saying buildings with an S, which S means plural. And you know, the, the, the city stance is, well, it says and, and is, is typically singular. Well, that's correct if you look it up on Google, but it also says it's not always singular. Um, so that S on buildings is, you know, to me was a big key. So we go back and forth a little bit. Um, he says I have to tie it into the existing shed that way. You know, if the roof lines are tied in, then hey, now it's one building. This is how they've done it for a long time. I said, okay, well, again, just because that's how it's been done, doesn't necessarily mean that's it's been being enforced proper or what I would consider right. Um, so I said, okay, so then I talked to his boss, Joe. Me and Joe go round and round a little bit. Joe says, look, it's got to be connected. And I said, okay, well, again, show me in the code how it's connected. How do you have to connect it? Because if you're saying it's got to be connected, you have to have something in your code showing. He goes, well, that's on building. I said, okay. He says, so whatever building tells you, you have to do, that's what you have to do. Great, okay. So I get with Lucas County, get with building. They acknowledged, they said, hey, look, if you run a piece of, they initially said conduit, which I, I went with two inch steel. Um, because each, each one's going to be a free floating structure, so you can't permanently attach them because they're going to expand and contract at different rates based on, you know, how they're poured, how the concrete's poured. So I thought we had it all figured out. I turned into, turned into permit. I got to permit Lucas County, turned into permit for zoning. Obviously, Tim then seen it. Tim wasn't happy with it. Uh, Joe got involved. Me and Joe go round and round a little bit. Joe's like, look, that's a piece that can be removed, et cetera, et cetera. And again, in my head, I'm like, okay, you guys are getting into building, not zoning, right? Building is going to determine how it has to be attached structurally, et cetera, et cetera. So anyways, I go talk to Leslie, me and Leslie go, you know, talk a little bit. Leslie's like, look, you know, we, instead of trying to go down the road of taking this piece out or putting this piece in or whatever, why not, you know, we should probably have some sort of carport ordinance. Now, by this time, I've already submitted in everything and Tim's denied it, of course, because again, he's just following what his guidelines are. Um, so everybody knew it's a steel carport, so they said, hey, we're going to be doing carports. So they do this. I, I didn't know anything about the, the new code they were writing. Um, when it, all of a sudden I get a phone call saying, hey, the new code's good. You can come fill out your application. You're ready to go. Well, when I get there and go to fill out the application for the new code, I, as I'm reading through it, it initially had the carports couldn't be any more than ten foot wide. Well, ten foot wide again, doesn't make a whole lot of sense when a normal little car is roughly seven foot from mere to mere. So if you pull inside, you're going to lose two inches each side of the steel structure. Now you're down, you know, basically almost nine and a half feet. How are you going to open a car door to get out? So me and Leslie talk about it, they agree, they change it to eighteen. Well, then, as I'm reading it, now it's also saying it's supposed to be, and I have it right here someplace. Um supposed to be all supports, roof and fascia shall match the same as the main building. Well, again, the main building's a stick-built building. And technically, if you're going to go that route, then your support is still your foundation wall and stick build on top of it. So unfortunately, the entire time I've been, you know, going after this steel carport, which to me seems relatively simple. And I thought everything was set, but you know, here we are. Um, you know, so I kind of go back and forth with it a little bit because again, with the carport, you know, initially, because it says the roof must 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 match, which Tim is correct technically. He's like, hey, it's a shingled roof, you're going to have to shingle this roof. Again, why am I shingling a roof on a a simple carport? If you actually look up carports on Google, they they're all, the first three or four pages are going to be all steel carports. It's not a stick build. And then technically, if you look at the code, the way it's written, that if you're going to have it, you know, basically matched, then that means you really can't be a pole barn structure either, because that's a stick, you know, the house is a stick frame house. So, yeah, so here I am, still trying to get a a simple steel carport. You know, to me, I I understand, you know, I understand the city's, the city's point, because again, they don't want them popping up all over, and they necessarily, some of them don't look as nice as other ones. As me and Tim talked about, the one that I'm trying to do is what they call an A-frame style construction. So it looks like a true building and stuff like that. It don't have the rounded corners, you know, to me, the rounded corner ones, they look pretty tacky, et cetera, et cetera. So to me, you know, some of the, some of the code verbiage in there, again, could be changed. Obviously, that's not where we're at today. Um but to me, that's kind of, you know, kind of where my head's at. I did ask, you know, along the way, uh because like I said, I have been involved in code a lot. Typically, your building codes are every three to five years they're reviewed. And then after they're reviewed, you know, they make modifications or, you know, whatever, or verbiage stays the same, but it still shows when they were reviewed. Um so I noticed that one of them, and matter of fact, I think I just seen one earlier today, was like two thousand thirteen, and I don't need to throw anybody names or anybody on the bus. But when I was like, you know, well, maybe you guys want to make your codes a little bit clearer. And the statement back I got was, well, you know, if it's vague, then we can kind of interpret it the way we want. And I went, what? So that seems kind, like I said, to me, there's some stuff in your guys' codes that I think could be, I don't know if you guys have a review board that, you know, however many, you know, every three to five years, they review them, they go back through just to make sure you're keeping everything up to date. Not really sure exactly that process, but it's a simple steel A-frame carport. Uh everything's galvanized steel, two-inch steel. Uh concrete anchored down into the actual uh, you know, the smet slab, open all the way around, other than the gable ends are are finished. It's going to be a gray metal. Uh I think it's Old Town Gray. There's a, there's a color swatch thing, I think, that Tim submitted. And that's it. I mean, it's relatively simple.
So this is, Tim, this is kind of what we talked about last month, right? With the change that was referred to city council?
That is, this is the ordinance that was referred from city council that that came in front of the board, that is correct.
Right. And so we recommended approval on that?
That is correct.
And was it approved by city council?
Um I believe it is still on council's agenda for the next meeting, and the mayor may be able to speak to that.
I don't know if we've set the public hearing on that or not yet, but I mean, that's obviously the next. I think we got to have a public hearing before we do anything.
I I that sounds correct.
So it does specify that it should be a maximum of ten feet wide by twenty feet long.
So I can speak on that behalf because I've had conversation with Leslie, the city law director. Um that that ten-foot wide has been changed, I believe, in the proposal to council.
Okay.
And and like I said, I mean, unfortunately, ten-foot wide, I mean, then you take a full-size pickup truck, it's eight, almost eight foot mirror to mirror. And then you try to open it, you know, you got a kid in the back backseat, try to open the door and get get a kid out of the car seat, so.
Right.
And and I believe right now is how they have it is it's eighteen feet after I've kind of said, hey, wait a minute, ten feet don't make sense.
Right. And it has to be three feet from the side or rear property line.
Correct. I think, to me, what I'm seeing in your guys' code here, the biggest, you know, what I, to me, it would be, you know, the whole carport, including all supports, roof and fascia must match the same construction as a main building. And I and I think the reason being is, again, most of the time, there are going to always be a steel carport. In order to try to stick build something, it's, you know, you're going to have to do a pole barn construction anyways. Um, you know, to me, if if you included something in there where it has to be an A-frame construction, you keep the buildings looking a lot nicer and they're not, you know, rounded corners and stuff like the kits that you can buy from Menards, et cetera, et cetera. Most of your kits you can buy are normally twenty-one feet by twenty-one feet. So if you actually do run it by eighteen by twenty or around that area, now they have to go get a custom one, which is typically more money. You're not just going to a box store, throwing something, you know, it's throwing something kind of janky up.
Yeah, that's what I think the conversation that we had last month is that we just didn't want the flyby pop up a carport without thinking it through and having it have the same integrity as the main building, right?
Correct. And and again, I, you know, I submitted the engineering data, Lucas County, you know, they've already checked engineering data and everything. They're all good to go right now. They're just waiting on zoning before they approve the actual, you know, the actual permit itself.
Right.
Like, like I said, it's two-by-two uh galvanized steel structure um with some, with some metal on it for a roof and metal in the, in the ends. And I think I actually, there's a PDF file or whatever in there that you can actually kind of see what the structure looks like. Yep.
And I I think our thought process, correct me if I'm wrong, everyone, is that we wanted this to be a special use permit so that when they came before us, we could assess whether it was going to be a flimsy structure and 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 eyesore, or if it was going to actually be something that was um in compliance with the look of the neighborhood, right? Would you agree with that?
If you're asking me, the answer is yes. I think you're.
I'm asking the rest of the, the committee here.
So Mr. Gross, let me ask you a question, if I may.
Absolutely.
Have you, have you had conversations with your um with your neighbors and what's their thought process on you building this structure?
I have not, only because, I mean, I can, I know them briefly, because remember, I just bought the house here. The house was a new construction build. I'm going to have to go back and look, but I'm going to say somewhere around maybe July or so, June-July area is when I bought the house. And 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 not to be rude or anything else to you guys, but if I would have known it was in the city, I probably wouldn't have bought it. Because in the, in the building trades, unfortunately, and I understand what you guys are trying to do, I get it, but it's it's not, uh, most contractors are not in a hurry to race there because there's a lot of red tape to cut through, let's just say that. But unfortunately, so I have not. If if you need me to, I mean, I know them briefly, but it's it's literally, I've probably talked to them three or four times at best. And it is, I don't know if anybody realizes it either. Also, it's at a dead-end street. Balfour does stop there, it doesn't go, you know, it doesn't go through.
Yeah, I drove back there today. Um, so this is your main residence, or is this?
This is the residence I bought for my daughter. My daughter lives there.
Your daughter lives there. Okay, so is this going to be a permanent carport? Are you looking to perhaps extend into an attached garage at some point or a more?
So later on down the road, if she wants to, which I, again, you know, again, I I was the one who purchased the house, et cetera, et cetera, trying to help her out because, you know, she has my little granddaughter. Um and at the end of the day, uh if it's something, it would be nice to have an enclosed garage on there for sure, just extend it out all the way across. But right now, I'm going to be honest with you, for the next three to ten years, I'm going to say probably not. Because again, in order to do that, you're going to go in, you have to cut concrete out, put in footers, et cetera, et cetera, change. And and unfortunately, where the electric is, they put the electric meter on that end of the house, going to make it a little bit more of a challenge too, but it can be done. It can be done, but it's going to be a little pricey. And so my theory was, if you could, you know, for twenty-nine hundred, three grand, throw up a, you know, throw up a carport, and at least that way she can park, you know, rain, snow, whatever, at least park the car in in, you know, undercover.
Mm-hmm.
And that, through your experience, how long do the carports last as far as maintenance?
So as a rule of thumb, most all your steel, even even your sheet metal steel, is going to be guaranteed for at least twenty-five plus years. And and if you actually start to look around right now, you're going to see that most people, and and of course, you know, Erie Metal Roofing now, um you know, most people are starting to look at going with metal roofs. You're seeing a lot more, you know, standing seams and just normally corrugated right over top of shingles because it's cheap. And at the end of the day, it's, it lasts a lot longer than shingles do.
But since we've forever changed because of people who are gripping and placing.
Okay. So it's going on the so I've got a map here. It's going on the side that's closest to the neighbor. The other side is like a a weird lot, right?
Well, the other side is actually, it's still, so basically what they did with those lots is where the house was built, that used to be one big lot that ran across from Balfour over the other street.
Yeah.
Back half off. The neighbor on the other side that you're talking about, he still owns that whole big lot.
Okay.
He has a house on the front side, but the back is basically lawn back there. And then it goes back and touches, I believe, your guys' is, you know, the the city's property back in there. It's kind of like a turnaround spot or something.
Yeah, okay.
Now him, I've talked to quite a few times because he has, he has a couple of dogs that, uh, you know, they they bark a little bit, but dogs don't bother me at all, but a couple of their neighbors, I think, are complaining a little bit, but it's, I mean, to me, it's it's dogs.
Yeah. Okay. So if we if we have a motion to recommend, that's a recommendation to city council, correct?
Correct.
On this?
Correct. This is a, this is a recommendation back, correct?
And it would be a motion to recommend based on approval of what we sent them last month. Correct? Because that has not been approved?
I believe that is correct, or if it's a recommendation for something outside of that, I believe it would take super majority to approve.
Okay.
So so Tim, let me make sure I understand where we sit. We have Mr. Gross um has put this SUP application in front of us. Does this application follow what is under consideration by city council and is probably going to have a public hearing set?
Correct.
It does.
Yep.
It follows that.
I specifically asked that question of Leslie, whether this needed to be held off until council approved or didn't approve, whatever the the results are, and she felt comfortable proceeding under the, under the criteria that council is considering.
So so let me make sure, I'm just double checking. We have something that's going in front of council. Well, I don't recall whether we've set a public hearing yet or not, but it's basically under that change to the zoning code, this would be permissible, correct? This particular installation would be permissible?
That is subject to the interpretation of this board.
Okay.
And that, that, I mean, that it's it's based off the interpretation of the verbiage of the language, which I believe you all received the excerpt from that, the criteria. That came out in an email, I believe, on Monday.
Can you pull that up?
Hey, Ken, if you can hear me, I don't know what you got going on in the background, if it's a TV or something, but it's fairly noticeable. Just loads up. I don't know if you got a door you can close or something like that, or walk to a room. All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm trying to pull this up here. This is November seventh, this I have a November seventh asking for height, color, style, roof materials, pole materials, and then we have that, it looks like we have that with the photos.
That was a follow-up from Mr. Gross, correct?
Yeah, and then here is the
You should have some comments that came out of the administration side, um as well as the zoning side.
Right. Then let me, let's, let me share this. Okay, so this is the R two.
That is what the um uh requirements are on the ordinance in front of council.
Right. And it's eighteen by twenty feet?
Yeah, all of this is exactly what was in front of the board last month.
Mm-hmm.
Except for the, the eighteen by twenty was ten by twenty, and that has been adjusted.
Right.
I believe all the other verbiage is exact.
So the biggest item in question is number seven, correct?
Correct.
I believe that's accurate.
So if this was four-by-four construction or six-by-six construction with a single roof, does that meet specs better than what? Is it, is it a different, is it more acceptable than what is being proposed? Even though that may not weather as well?
Are you asking Tim or me?
I'm asking our committee.
I think he's asking the board.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Beauty's in the eye of the beholder.
Right.
And and I've got a, and I've got a hard stop in about three minutes, so.
So are we recommending moving forward? Are we recommending? Not. Is Ken, can Ken hear us?
Can you hear? Yes, he's there. He said he can hear.
Get up pretty good, but I can hear everybody.
The I, I mean, number seven is the item in issue, and in this case, it it doesn't match the existing structure. To mine, I don't know what the existing structure looks like, but if it's a new construction, it's got a shingle roof.
Yeah, you should have got an email with a photo
Hello home.
of the front of the home.
Oh, that's the, the White House.
Yeah, it's a sided with, with chingled.
Okay. Maybe I have it here in my pack, and I shuffle the papers around so much.
I mean, I would have no problem with a carport with the steel. I mean, it would be no different than a house with a steel roof and shingled roof at the same time.
And again, at some point in time, you're, you know, like I said, a lot of roofs are going to steal anyway, so probably when that roof, because it's such a simple roof, when that roof goes out, that's probably what I'll end up putting back on there is steel.
Yeah.
This is just a straight ranch. You don't have any valleys or anything.
Drive, driving, personally driving back there, I would have no concerns with the looks being in that location, the, the neighborhood and the kind of the dead-end street, just recommending for council to have a public hearing and see what the neighbor, I mean, that's where it would go next, correct, with the neighbor review and see what they had to say.
Okay, is that, is that a motion to approve?
I would, I would have a motion for approval to have the um recommend back to. I would, I would have a motion for approval to have the, um, recommend back to council.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay. And this is all, this, these are only in R two, correct?
Yeah.
Carports are only R two.
Yeah, I, I unfortunately have to jump, sorry, everybody.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Okay, so it'll go back to city council, they'll do what they need to do with it, and then you'll hear from there, right?
Yep.
Yep.
That's correct.
Perfect.
Thank you for your patience and hanging out and letting us walk, talk through it. One of those non-traditional things that.
I, I understand.
Quite a few of those this year, so we're working through some things. And as you said, code needs to be looked at and reviewed, and that's kind of what we're doing, so.
Yeah, like, and again, that's just my, my opinion, like I said, I mean, so. There's, there's, there's a few when you go through there, when you go through your zoning and stuff, there's a few things that. If you could provide a little bit more clarity, I think it would help all of us. Because then you you're eliminating a gray area, now, now you don't have to, you don't have to think about it quite as much, so.
Right. Okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tim, any additions?
There are no additions.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we done recording?
Let me, I'm second, yes, Ken?
Can I come in and meet with your IT guy and have him look at my phone to figure out?